Good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and call this meeting for Monday, June 9th, 2025, to order. I'd ask at this time if Mr. Pastor Will Davis will come and lead us in our invocation.
Joining me is Tobin Davis, rising third grader at Union Elementary.
Thank you for coming.
Let us pray together. Our Father in heaven, God, we come into your holy presence, bringing you today this meeting, bringing you this board, bringing you everyone who is in attendance. Father, we also bring you this agenda that is before us, and we ask that your will be done. Lord, we ask that you give us wisdom as we make decisions and govern, and Lord, we thank you for this opportunity. May we continue to do what's right in your sight, and may we continue to trust in you. Father, I ask for your continued protection of this county and this board and this school system. Father, I ask for your provision, continue to provide your resources for us, and may you lead us in right path for your name's sake. Father, we thank you for the day you have provided. Lord, let us rejoice that we get to serve you, and we thank you for giving us this time. God, continue to lead us as we continue to follow you. It's in the name of Jesus, and in the power of the Holy Spirit we pray together. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. At this time, I'd like to recognize Ms. Reese Elliott from Burns High School. If she would come and lead us in our pledge, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reese. At this time, I'd like to recognize Ms. Rhonda Binfield for some recognition.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to recognize one of our premier local employers, who has become just a wonderful business partnership for us, and several outstanding recent high school graduates. The students, of course, are a highlight tonight, but before we get to them, I do want to take just a minute and share a little bit with you about this business partnership that we have with Atrium Health. Three years ago, Atrium expanded their Rise to Success program to include Cleveland County. Five students were chosen that first year. It has grown each year, and in this, the third year, we have 11 high school seniors who will be continuing their education tuition-free at a community college while also being employed with Atrium. In addition to Rise to Success, Atrium expanded another program, the High School Summer Internship Program, and we have had four students chosen each summer to take part in a six-week paid internship with Atrium Cleveland or Atrium Kings Mountain. And yet, a third program that Atrium is offering to our students for the very first time this summer, Hype, is a four-week job shadowing program where students will take part in professional development and simulations with Atrium, and they'll be awarded a stipend after completing that program. We're very grateful to Atrium Health for providing these programs that recognize student achievement and interest in healthcare careers, and for providing opportunities and experiences for our students. So I first want to recognize Veronica Poole Adams. She's a vice president, facility executive for Atrium Cleveland. If she will come forward and receive a certificate from Dr. Fisher. We thank her for their wonderful partnership with Cleveland County Schools in many, many ways. And now she is going to help recognize our students. This year, again, we have 11 Cleveland County school graduates who are beginning their journey to a career in health science, thanks to the Rise to Success program. I will call out those student recipients this year who will be participating in the program. We have 11. We have several here tonight. Keep in mind, it's summer, school's out. Some of them are gone and unable to be here. First, we have Krista Childers. Krista will be Krista will be participating at Atrium Lincoln. Krista just graduated from Burns High School. Stay right there. Next, we have Raven Doomlau. Raven is a graduate of Shelby High School. She'll be completing her position at Atrium Cleveland. Next, we have Rachel Reese Elliott. Reese just graduated from Burns High School. And Chloe Hull. Chloe is also a graduate of Burns High School, and she will be at Atrium Cleveland, working in medical equipment. And Veronica, if you'll come and have a picture made with them. And I will just finish the list of students, if you don't mind, just so we can give them their recognition, even though they couldn't be here tonight. And they could have come in late. John Corbett. Okay, John. Lonnie Downey. Maddie Abernathy. Madison Emery. Kindeland Reese Geddes. Destiny Giles and Kara Segal. So congratulations to these 11 students pursuing health science.
Thank you, Ms. Binfield. At this time, we'll make a motion. I'd like entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. If, without objections, we'll take the adoption for 3.01 and 4.01 together. Do I have a motion?
I'd like.
Oh, adoption to approve. Yes, I'm sorry. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'd like to amend the agenda.
Okay. What's your motion, sir?
140, go into closed session, 143-318.11A3, to consult with our attorney on personal matters. Personnel. And.
Okay. All right, we have a motion in a second. Well, we got to vote on it first. It's got to pass. Let's see. It will be at the end of the agenda, but, well, let's vote on it and see. All those in favor in the going to closed session, if you'd raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Eight to one. Oh, seven to two. Okay, seven to two. All right, we will put that at the end of the agenda. It will be, yeah, 9.03. And Mr. Blanton, if you will hold that general statute, please, I will call on you then to repeat that general statute.
Okay.
All right. All right, now do I have a motion to adopt the agenda? As amended. All right, I heard Mr. Bridges first and Mr. Humphries second. All those in favor of adopting the agenda? Nine to zero. All right, now, motion to approve the minutes from May 12th, 2005. Mr. Humphries and Mr. Bridges. All those in favor? Nine to zero. All right. Committee reports, finance and personnel. Mr. Leford.
June 4th, finance and personnel committee meeting called by committee members of the chair of the 2526 interim continuing budget resolution, which is required prior to July 1st, because there has not been a state budget passed. The budget will allow us to continue to operate without a state budget. The county approved their budget, which funds the county at the Board of Education at Kings Mountain last year.
Committee discussed and supported the resolution. Thank you. Find my place here again. The committee discussed and supported the resolution. It will come before the full board for approval at the June meeting. Mr. McDaniel shared a draft of the 2425 budget amendment number two. There will be some changes before the next meeting as the state is continuing to send changes. The committee discussed the amendment and related the budget process. The amendment will come to the full board for review and approval at the next meeting. Dr. Jennifer Wampler shared a staffing update for the 2526 school year. The committee discussed the update and the good progress that is being made in preparation for the next school year. Dr. Fisher shared a graduation update and some preliminary information related to the end of grade and, of course, testing results. A footnote here that I feel that we had an excellent graduation year. I think things went off pretty well. It looked good. Kids were happy. The parents were happy, and I think they behaved themselves rather well. So it was an excellent time for our graduation. Eric Lamanna shared information related to changes coming to the state health insurance plan for 2026. With no new business, the meeting adjourned. The next finance and personnel committee meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, July 16th, 2025, at 11:45 a.m.
Thank you, Mr. Leford. Next on the agenda is the interim budget resolution. It does come from committee. Any questions concerning this? All right, all those in favor of the budget resolution, if you would raise your, that's nine to zero. Next is budget amendment number two. Mr. McDaniel, would you have a few words to say on that?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Mr. McDaniel, let me, for clarification, this brought my attention. This says 2425 budget amendment. Should this be that, or is this 2526?
The budget amendment.
Yes.
For the current year we're in.
So it will be 2425. Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Humphries. Just wanted to clarify that.
What you have in your packet tonight is budget amendment number two. It's typical this time of year, we're doing a budget amendment just to true up balances where we are, where we stand. By law, we have to be in compliance at two-digit purpose level. So hopefully, this is the last one for the year, but there's 20 days left in the year, so hopefully, we won't be back again, but if necessary, we'll have another amendment later.
I think we made it clear last meeting, this budget is always a moving target.
Changes every day.
Changes every day. Okay.
We were amending until lunchtime today, trying to still make sure.
So is this the lunchtime amendment, or is this?
This is the lunchtime amendment for today.
All right. All right. Any questions, Mr. Mc? Yes, sir.
Got one question. On the $50,000, is that just for, till we get our budget approved, that gives you the authority that you can roll $50,000 anytime you want to, or is that just till we get this budget approved? I read here in our paper.
Are you talking about at the end, where it talks about $50,000?
Let's see.
Yeah, right. That's transferring between.
Amount up to $50,000 may be transferred between functions with a report of such transfers made to the Board of Education to regular meetings. Is that for all the time, that you can transfer $50,000?
Yes.
Okay. Well, some had thought had understood it. It was just till we got our budget situated, but no.
Okay. You good?
I'm good not to vote for it.
Okay.
I was thinking it was only for this year, that it gave us authorization to do this.
It allows us to move money between function codes. To keep your budget in check.
But not for just 2425? On past 2425?
It's just for the current budget year that we are in.
Okay, that's what I was thinking.
Those who sit on the finance committee, I'll just say this. If we do not allow them to move money from state, local, they have to be able. Or we're going to be in a jam. Mr. Blanton, just wanted to clarify that. This isn't adding $50,000. This gives them the ability. There's so many, we got nine budgets.
Okay, I understand that, the need to make, I didn't understand it exactly like that, and I wanted to double, double check.
Do you understand? You got it now?
I got it.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to make sure that that's clear, because that would really put a damper on finance, trust me. All right, any other questions?
Have we had this in the past?
Yes.
How much?
I hadn't been a part of a policy that's changed.
How much have we had in the past?
But that's never changed, as far as I know.
It's been $50,000. Okay.
Yeah, okay. All right, everybody good now? All right. I need a motion and a second to approve the, Mr. Bridges. Did I hear Mr. Bridge? All right, all those in favor? Thank you. All right. Personnel report. You all have that in your packet. I need a motion and a second. Mr. Bridges. Second by Mr. Humphries. Is there? It was in the nepotism, who was the?
There's a section in there.
I don't think it's a board member. No, it's not a board member.
There was, there was a nepotism policy, or not policy, but sheet in here stating about a principle.
Right, but it's not a board member having to refuse. That's what we got a concern ourselves with. Okay, all right. Did I give you Mr. Bridges and I think, and Mr. Bridge? Okay, all right, we have a motion, second. Any more discussion? All right, all those in favor? Nine to zero. All right, let's move on to committee reports for safety and operations. Mr. Spur.
June 2nd, safety and operation committee meeting was called to order by Chairman Walter Spurling. Brian McClung shared the DMV update related to licensing of bus drivers, excuse me, and changes coming in August 2025 to the process related to DOT physicals. David Pless shared growing issues related to staffing of our driver's education program. We're in desperate need of teachers, but there is no mechanism for getting additional teachers trained by DMV or DPI. This is a statewide issue. Leah Sink, who is our attorney, recommended submitting for a request for Attorney General opinion related to the refusal of DMV to allow school system employees to attend their certification class. This was unanimously supported by the committee. We will share other with other committees this week and brought to the full board for a vote at their next meeting. Daniel Howell provided a school safety update related to graduation. He also shared rapid deployment training will be occurring over the next couple of weeks for law enforcement and school staff. Mr. Spurling shared that he was able to attend the recent safety training at Kaiser along with school staff. That was very good. Rodney Border shared that he had noted positive data trends related to short and long-term suspensions and behavioral, behavior interventions for the 2425 school year. Sandy Hammerick updated the committee on the federal COPS School Violence Prevention Program grant. We have applied in the past, but we have not received the grant. This year, Mrs. Hammerick is continuing to work collaboratively with law enforcement and related agencies to reapply for the grant, focusing on commission or communication systems and equipment to improve the work and safety of our campuses. The Shelby Police Department brought up concern that no, was, they noted during graduation. Probation officers shared a question related to summer school. There was no other agency reports. Dr. Fisher reminded committee, the committee, that we have allotted CIF grant money for the Kings Mountain High School press box. David Brinkley from the Kings Mountain Touchdown Club shared his idea and plan for a press box project with a stadium renovation. The committee was supportive of the plan, but wanted the plan to be shared with the finance and personnel committee and the full board for consideration. Dr. Jennifer Wampler and Chip Childers shared the Capitol Projects Report. The committee reviewed the report, which will be attached to the board agenda at their June meeting as an information item. Jamie Courier shared that summer feeding started today with no new business. The meeting was adjourned. The next safety and operations committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, July 14th, 2025, at 11:45 p.m.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Spurling. Did all the board members catch the first part of what he said?
Yeah, I was wanting to ask that question. Did the board, did the rest of the board members hear that presentation from Kings Mountain, Brinkley and them?
I don't think that's been assigned. I was talking about the first part of the, with the DMV.
So, so the, can I, can I address it, Chairman?
The.
The DMV. So, the, we have a shortage of teachers that can drive, that can teach driver's ed, but we have, there's no route to train new teachers, because the DMV policy right now will not allow our teachers to go through the training process. The only people they accept right now are private businesses that teach driver's ed. So, so we're kind of in a pickle as far as how to get these teachers trained. Leah Sink, and that's, Leah Sink was going to write the Attorney General about it and ask if there's a route that we can open up to get new teachers trained. So currently, I think, Dr. Fisher, correct me if I'm wrong, currently we have eight, and normally, or Doc, or Mr. Pless, one of y'all.
We have 15.
And normally, we had 14 or 15?
15.
Okay, so we're at about half of what we need, which, this is just an information item for the, for the public, too. That means over the next year, we will not be able to teach the same amount of students that we have been teaching in the past. So the driver's ed, getting your driver's permit and license may slow down as a result.
Is that a state policy?
It is a state, it is a state problem.
It's a DMV problem. What they're trying to do is privatize driver's ed, is what they're trying to do. But let me make all of you aware that we have a TA policy for teacher assistance after driving a school bus. So there's all kind of complexity.
That's the second part of this. The, yeah, the second part of this is DOT physicals.
Yep.
And so, so to drive a school bus, you have to have a DOT physical, and, and there's, there's doctors to give, that can give a DOT physical have to be certified to give that physical. And there's less doctors, they're harder to get into. The requirement for each person is different based on their, their age and health, and so we're having a problem getting people medically certified to drive the buses, so. I do, no, not in the county. We, do you know how many in the county, Mr. Pless? Don't know how many in the county, but we have, we have a physician that, that would come ever, correct me if I'm wrong, every three months? Once a month, to give, to give this physical. But it, Mr. Pless, can Mr. Pless come up and address this? He knows all the particulars.
Come on, Mr. Pless. Let's give you about two minutes. I think you can knock it out pretty quick. But while he's coming up, I want to say, go back to the DMV thing. We have eight teachers, instructors right now. If we were to lose them, we'd have zero driver's ed instructors. We couldn't teach driver's ed because of DMV, not us. Mr., if you would, talk about the physical thing right quick, please.
So the big thing about DOT physicals is, right now, there has been a grace period. Like if, you're supposed to have your physical on June the 1st, and you can't get in to see a doctor until June the 7th. There was a grace period there that we could take advantage of. A person wouldn't lose their license. Of course, we didn't have them driving a bus between June 1st and June 7th. But now what the DMV wants to do is suspend that person's license for six months, so they wouldn't be able to drive a bus for six months, and then they would have to go back through bus class, get a permit, do their driving all over again. So we would lose a bus driver for, at minimum, nine months to a year. So that's a real issue that just want you guys to be prepared, you know, be aware of.
So, and some people ask, why, why don't you, why don't we do it early? Why don't we, why don't we make them go through their physical two months early?
So a physical lasts anywhere from six months to two years, depending on your health. And if you do it, the earlier you do it, you know, it starts that time over again. So it's just costing more time and money to do it early.
I don't think it's really the doctor. It's the time. If they, if they suspend it nine months, and our TAs have to drive a bus, we can't, we're without a TA. Oh, well, the thing was brought up, what if you're sick? What if an occasion happens that you just can't make it? It's not your fault, then you're, you're penalized for up to nine months because of something beyond their control. But anyway, thank you, Mr. Pless. All right, I just wanted to make sure all of you were aware of that. Nothing, it's not good news, but I wanted you to make sure that everybody caught that in the report. All right, next is education programs and policies. Ms. Sherman.
The June 3rd Educational Programs and Policy Committee meeting was called to order by Chairman Ron Humphries. Dr. Jennifer Wampler and Leah Sink reviewed policy updates recommended by the North Carolina School Boards Association related to legal changes. Updates to the following policies were discussed. 171040207230, discrimination and harassment prohibited by federal law. 172540357236, Title IX sexual harassment, prohibited conduct and reporting process prohibited conduct and reporting process. Twenty three oh two, remote participation in board meeting. Twenty three forty two, voting methods and forty forty seventy three ten, staff-student relations. The committee supported changes due to legal updates on all of these policies. The policies will go to the full board for a first read at their June meeting. Mr. Uffrey's led in a review of policy sixty four hundred, goals and organization of purchasing function. Sixty four zero one, ethics and the purchasing function. Sixty four twenty, contracts with the board. Sixty four twenty one, pre-audit and dispersment certifications. Sixty four twenty five, continuing contracts. These policies were reviewed and discussed as part of the committee's ongoing review of the Board Policy Manual and are in the six thousand section, which is support services. No changes were recommended to these policies by the committee. Dr. Chris Bennett shared a school performance data overview based on preliminary end-of-the-year grade and end-of-course testing data. Dr. Bennett shared the state timeline related to school performance grades and certified testing data. Our data in reading and math is positive overall. Science data and growth data will not be released by the state until fall of 2025. The committee discussed the data. Dr. Brian Hunnell shared a request from Kings Mountain High School for an optional overseas field trip to England, France, Belgium, and Germany in the summer of 2027. The committee unanimously supported the trip and it will come to the board for approval at their June meeting. Rhonda Benfield shared the CTE funding application and articulation agreement in detail, which reflects on the work of CTE in 2024-25 and looks forward to the 2025-26 school year. The committee discussed and unanimously supported the application and agreement, which will go to the full board for approval at their June meeting. Dr. Brian Hunnell shared multiple contracts and invoices for approval. First, he shared EC contracts for hosting NCDPI positions and multiple EC service contracts for visually impaired interpreters, speech teachers, specialized nurse services for North Shelby and for EC teachers. The service contracts are used when we have vacant positions that cannot be filled for needed services and have been used in the past. These EC contracts required board approval. Second, Dr. Hunnell shared an invoice for IXL renewal for grades two through twelve in the amount of ninety-two thousand eight hundred forty-three dollars and seventy-five cents, which requires board approval. Third, Dr. Jason Parker and Dr. Hunnell shared an invoice for Great Minds, which is geode kits for all third graders at the price of ninety-nine thousand nine hundred eighty-three dollars and ninety-two cents and requires board approval. We already have geode kits in K two. Fourth, Dr. Porter and Dr. Hunnell shared an invoice for ninety-five percent group, which are resources targeting comprehension, phonemic awareness, and phonics in elementary schools at a cost of twenty-four thousand two hundred forty-one dollars and twenty-two cents, which is a sole source purchase and therefore requires board approval. The committee unanimously approved these purchases and contracts, which will go to the full board for approval at their June meeting. For information purposes only, Ginger Jackson shared an invoice from CDW, Google, in which amount of fifty-nine thousand seven hundred fifty-two dollars and eighty-one cents for year two of three of the Google Workspace for Education Suite, which includes email accounts, drive apps, and security features. Dr. Fisher shared a graduation update. We had eight successful graduations in May. Over ten point four million unduplicated scholarship dollars were received by CCS graduating seniors. This number is higher than last year. Dr. Fisher also shared data related to graduating seniors also receiving their associate's degree or a certificate from Cleveland Community College. The committee went into closed session for consultation with the attorney. After a closed session, the committee approved updates to policy thirty-six twenty, extracurricular activities, and student organizations. This policy will go to the full board for a first read in June. With no additional new business, the meeting was adjourned. The next Educational and Policy Committee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, July fifteenth, 2025, at eleven forty-five a.m.
Thank you, Ms. Sherman. Seven point oh two, seven point oh three, seven point oh four, seven point oh five, seven point oh six, and seven point oh seven, all are for first read. No action necessary, but if you have any questions, just let me know or Superintendent know and we'll be glad to answer those. Next is the Kings Mountain Field Trip. That does come from committee. Any questions on the Kings Mountain High School Field Trip?
They will be following all the guidelines and if something comes up.
Yep. I think they've even said that they've, this is one of the people they continue to use before.
And they will refund and?
Insurance and everything.
And insurance and everything.
Yep.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions?
Does it need an extra chaperone?
Says you can sign up.
You can sign up, but I, I will tell you, this was brought up in the committee. This does come from parents' pockets, so if you want to pay, they may have an extra chaperone. So, anyway, all those in favor? Nine to zero. All right. CTE funding applications and agreement, this does come from committee. Any questions on that? All right. All those in favor? That passes nine to zero. All right. Next on the agenda is EC contracts. They're listed here in your information. I will say this, I guess this is a pet peeve of mine, most of these positions are listed on our website. We just can't find people to take these jobs, so we have to contract them out, which does cost us more money. But that's just a side note, but.
May I ask a question right there?
Yep.
Have we looked at offering more money for our people and maybe not have to go as much to reach out to that, you know? You know, somebody making thirty thousand, they're not going to, might not, might not be interested.
Mr. Blanton, let me try my best. I think I can answer that, that when you apply with us, you get all the benefits, health and all that.
Right.
These contract employees don't get that. So, you know, when you raise the money, you're going to probably run into a problem with other employees saying, why are they getting so much money more than me?
Well, I never, I'm not a good job guy.
Yeah, okay. But when you include benefits, that does, you know, cause the price to go up.
Okay.
All right.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
So, if we, if, are these positions continuing or continuously?
They've been on the, I think if I didn't mistake, and I heard, I was at this meeting, I heard that one had been on the website for two years.
I mean, are they going to continue to be on the website?
Yes.
So, if it gets filled, we can cut the contract?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I was asking.
Okay. Yes, sir.
All right. I want the public to understand, these are positions that are needed in our school system. I mean, there's just no way we can do without them. We wish we could find teachers to fill them, but unfortunately, that has not happened. So, we have to have these positions.
Thank you, Mr. Greg. I'll just piggyback on what you just said. Not only do we need them, money of them are mandated by either the feds or the state, so we don't have no choice.
But they're highly specialized.
Yep, they're specialized.
Federal, federally required position.
We had, one was specifically talked about, that we do have a child that has to have a nurse twenty-four seven. And they, we had to spawn a nurse, but nothing wrong with that, but it's just what we got to do. So, any other questions? We're going to move on. All right. All those in favor? It's nine to zero. All right. IXL renewal. That does come from committee. Any questions about that? If none, all those in favor?
I think it's that, by the way.
Okay, let me, uh, that is a computer.
It's a smarter, it's a simpler.
Yeah, I was there and I got the paper, but I don't know what IXL stands for.
I've had the pleasure of using it for quite a few years. It's a different.
Ms. Sherman, would you turn your microphone?
Oh, I thought I did.
It is, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay. It's a, it's a differentiated individualized.
You gotta talk to it.
It's an, a different, yeah, I can't look at Mr. Leffler and talk.
No, you gotta talk to the microphone.
It's a differentiated individualized reading and math program that student, that teachers can use to assist in meeting students where they are, to grow them in skills that they may need more practice or they're deficient in, or, so it's, it's a, it's a really good program.
Thank you, Ms. Sherman. You bailed me out of that one. All right. After Ms. Sherman's explanation, does anybody have any questions? All those in favor? That passes nine to zero. All right.
I'd still like to say some of our basics going back to that first, second, and third grade.
Okay. G E O D E, I really don't know how I really want to pronounce it, kits for third grades. Geode, geode, okay. That does come from committee. Any questions on that? If none, all those in favor? It's nine to zero. Percent group. Any?
I don't know.
Oh, ninety-five percent group, I'm sorry. Yep, I thought it's seven point one, three point nine five, but it's ninety-five percent group. Okay, Ms. Sherman?
I have not used that program, so I'm sure Dr. Parker or somebody could probably really speak to that.
Dr. Fisher, would you like to attempt to answer that question or have one of your staff answer that question?
The ninety-five percent group.
Dr. Parker.
Dr. Parker. Yeah, he always got to be ready with this crowd.
So, ninety-five percent group, we do have products already from that company being used in the district. There are multiple purchases on that quote. Some of it is to help fourth and fifth graders with their comprehension skills, which is a direct response to data. The other side is phonemic awareness intervention and early basic K one resources to use to intervene early to catch reading gaps while they are small.
That sentence right there is enough to convince me.
Yeah.
Yep. All right. Any other questions? All those in favor? That's nine to zero. All right. Dr. Fisher.
Just a very few updates for the board tonight. As you are well aware, it is summer 2025. It's a busy time of year. We've had folks in our building almost every day already preparing for the next school year. As we close out this school year, if you look at the third line there, the close of this school year is on June thirtieth, close out the twenty-four, twenty-five school year and begin to open the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. So, right now, lots of things are going on across the district, in our schools, closing out the end of a great school year and getting ready, preparing to open the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. As stated earlier in the Finance Personnel Report, we still do not have a state budget this time, which, you know, is not overly abnormal or alarming at this point. I think the most alarming point is the conversations that we're hearing and the feedback that we're getting from the state about the prospects of when a state budget would be expected. So, as you did tonight, appreciate you approving the resolution, the continuing budget, so we can open up the twenty-five, twenty-six school year as we prepare to move forward with our, with our calendar year without a budget. And again, that's not uncommon to begin July and even into August without a budget. Hopefully, we won't extend too far in the fall without a budget, but we will keep you up to speed on that. I would like to highlight the growth in a hundred percent of our reading and math scores compared to twenty twenty-four, twenty-five in, in, let me qualify that, in third through eighth grade. We had significant growth in grades four, five, seven, and eight in reading. When I say significant growth, looking at either over seven points of growth in those areas. Significant growth in third, fourth, sixth, and seventh in math. What, again, we consider significant growth, we'd say something over seven percent growth. So, really proud of where we are with testing data. As highlighted in the Educational Programs Report, science scores are delayed to late this summer. So, we've gotten a lot of questions, feeling a lot of conversations about how do we compare overall, but we can look in some reading and math data, but when we're looking at our school performance, we have to take everything with a grain of salt because science data is, we do not have science data. It is anticipated at the end of the year, they are renorming the grades five, eight science test and biology. So, all that information will be, will be later in the summer. So, you'll get or receive a more complete review of data in August, once all that information is received. And then, the next big event from a board standpoint would be the board meeting on July twenty-first. You have a couple of board activities, a couple of trainings and different things that you've received in your end-of-the-week updates. If you've got any questions about that, please let me know. Ms. Sherman, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Fisher. Any questions for the Superintendent before he leaves?
Would you like to do math at a reading level?
Well, in some grade levels, personally, yes. As a math teacher, I prefer that math, but we've got a lot of good things going, our, the data from our grades three through eight are really positive, we're really excited about where we're moving into this.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Fisher. Do we have any, no public participation? All right. Mr. Blanton, you have a motion for closed session. Oh, sorry. I apologize. Let me do the board member comments. The board, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead, my fault. Board member comments. Ms. Sherman.
I'd like to say congratulations to. Okay. Congratulations to all the schools and the school staff on a wonderful ending to the school year. I think we had a great school year. It's been a privilege to me to be able to be a part of Cleveland County Schools again and to be on the school board. And I just, I think it was just all the celebrations at the end of the year, you look back and you see, it was all worth it. So, congratulations, that came with a lot of work. I know that. It looks easy on our end, but I know what goes on behind the scenes and it's a lot, a lot of work. So, also, the graduates, congratulations to all Class 2025. I didn't think I would be involved in, in education in 2025. So, I'm honored to be a part of congratulating our graduates. And I would also say, congratulations, I'm so excited about the preliminary testing data that Dr. Fisher shared. That also goes with a lot, a lot of work and that's a big success. So, I'm very proud of our teachers and our students for what they've done.
Thank you, Ms. Sherman.
Let me say one thing.
Mr. Leffert and Mr. Greg.
I missed some of the graduations that was unable to attend. Some of you know, some of you may know, but my wife had another stroke during that time. And I had to be with, with her and couldn't attend. Dr. Fisher so graciously excused me on that. And would love to have attended all of them, but there was just no way, and I appreciate thoughts and prayers for that. She is improving some. She's still got some ways to go. I think she's trying to do too much. It's what I told Ms. Sherman just a few minutes ago, but please keep her in your prayers and thoughts, if you don't mind.
Thank you, Mr. Leffert. I will say this, family always comes first. We will keep your wife in our thoughts and prayers. Mr. Greg.
I was able to attend a lot of the graduations this time, and I tell you what, they all did go off really well. I want to say congratulations to all the kids, but I want to say congratulations to all the teachers and the staff that spent a lot of hard work getting these kids where they are today. You know, it, it's not easy. I'm not a teacher, but I know it's not easy teaching these days because the rules are not the same as they were fifty years ago when I was in high school. So, there's a lot of difference and you guys, I have to commend you for what you do. And I hope everybody has a safe summer. And thanks for what you do again.
Thank you, Mr. Greg.
So, likewise, congratulations, good job. It takes, it takes a team all the way from bottom to top, everybody clicking on the same sheet of music. So, good job, everybody. I do want to point out, you know, in the past, people have criticized Cleveland County Schools, said, we're, we're not up to par, we're not doing our jobs, we're not doing good, but I'm going to point out, one hundred and forty-four students earned an associate's degree before they even graduated. degree before they even graduated from high school. Hundred and fifty-five, I think it was, earned a certificate before they even, from college, before they even graduated high school. Approximately two hundred students were awarded a thousand dollar scholarship. And they, and that, the, the criteria for that was a four point oh average and, and the top twenty percent of the students. So, so that wasn't even all the to, the four point oh students. That was just the top twenty percent of the, the four point oh students. Two hundred scholarships. Ten million, did you say ten, I think you said tonight in, in your minutes, so... Ten point four million dollars worth of scholarships handed out to Cleveland County students. I mean, they don't hand them out just because you go to school, you know? They, they hand them out for, because you did something right, because you studied and because you did something well, and because we have staff and teachers that push these students and, and they learn and they're worthy of that money to go to college. So anybody, I'm going to tell you, anybody that says Cleveland County Schools isn't up to par, we'll have a discussion. And, and I'll bring, and I'll bring those same numbers out to you. Number, the numbers don't lie. So good job, everybody, everybody, bus drivers, custodians, lunchroom, it, it takes everybody. So congratulations and good job.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearlant. All right, I will just say, I will just say this before we go into closed session. If there is any, I know it's June, probably on vacation, they probably know, maybe somebody watches later on YouTube, but I see it. The superintendent gave us these numbers and they're amazing. Twelve positives to three negatives. I mean, are we perfect? No, but doggone, some of these are some high numbers. And I'm very proud of the job our teachers are doing. A lot of criticism to you last year, but I hope and pray, and I think by looking at these numbers, we're, I'm, I'm very happy as the chairman of this board to say that we have great teachers and, and I see these numbers and they look excellent. And with that being said, Mr. Blanton, you have a motion for closed session?
Well, I attended the Burns High School graduation this year and it went very smoothly and very good and the weather, I guess, was threatening everywhere, but it held off to let those graduations get through. And I want to thank all of our kids that graduated and participated and all of our staff. So I don't know, I haven't got too much to say tonight.
You got the motion you can say.
I got a motion, though.
All right, let's hear it.
Well, all right. North Carolina public bodies, including the school board, can enter into closed session to consult with their attorney under the open meeting laws, General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen dot eleven A three.
To...
To discuss the personnel and...
With the attorney.
Uh-huh.
With the attorney.
With the attorney and stuff.
Thank you. Have a motion in a second. All those in favor? All right, we're now in clo, we're going to close session.